Lisa, usually on attendees I see citizens who are there. The only one I see right now is Karen. So all those others that you had mentioned aren't, I don't see them on there, so I don't know if there's.
I'm only seeing four as well, and the three of them are staff members.
Okay, so we're good to go ahead and start then?
Yep.
We got another one popping in right now.
There's Mr. Clemens. Okay, hi, Mr. Clemens. Okay, it is 6:00 PM. I'll call our city council meeting, our virtual city council meeting to order. It is May 12th, 2020. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Okay, roll call please, Ms. Huffman.
Mayor Ortega.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lauer.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Estes.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Geek.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
Members virtually present.
Okay, real quick, we're gonna have Ms. Lisa go over just the, for the public and anybody who needs to kind of go through the, how to work the system again. Well, she's got a brief statement she's gonna do real quick to go over that, so go ahead.
Hi all. Right now, as an attendee, you are muted. There are two ways that you need to be able to get a council's attention. The first is on your vertical menu bar, there's a little hand that you can click on that, that will, is the equivalent of raising your hands. A staff member will then call on you and unmute you for you to make your comments. Another way is to ask questions directly in the questions pane. In the attendees pane, type the question to city council and/or staff members. A staff member will read the question out loud and direct to the appropriate party. If it's not visible, click on the orange arrow to open up the pane.
Okay. All right, and I think most everybody who's on right now that I can see, they've been on a couple of times before, so that should be pretty easy. If you're having issues or whatever, and you'd like to say something, try to push some buttons and we'll see what we can do, but I think everyone should be okay as far as getting on, so we will go ahead and keep moving forward. We have a pretty short agenda tonight, so we'll get through it as quickly as possible. Item 4A and B, we have presentations, board committee, commission appointments, which we have done tonight, so we'll move forward to item number five, our city council agenda requests and/or announcements. And I'll start with Ms. Duncan, anything tonight?
Good afternoon, good evening. I was just wanting to say I was honored and privileged to accompany the Operation Rolling Thunder, AKA the Public Safety Parade. It was great seeing all the smiles and kids dressed as first responders and to all the thank yous that were seen on social media. It was a job well done.
Okay, great. Mr. Geek?
Nothing from me tonight.
All right, Mr. Applegate?
Nothing from me tonight.
Okay, Ms. Estes?
I have a couple of things. First, with the school on the way out, right now they're providing meals. But there's a local group here in the community called True North Empowerment Services, and they're working with Connections for Life to provide meals for residents in the tri-zip area, which is 80925-80817 and 80911. So that'll be for this summer, and if you need help finding food resources for the summer, you can call this number and they'll give you a hand. And the number is 719-510-7364. And the other thing is, this is National Preservation, Historic Preservation Month, so just a shout out to all the people that are interested in keeping our history alive here in Fountain and to looking for preservation of our heritage. That's it, thank you.
Okay, as far as I know, I think our, at least Fountain-Fort Carson is still gonna be, they always do lunch during the summer anyway. I think that's gonna continue. Maybe we could look into that, have someone look into that for sure, and then we can maybe just pass that along our Facebook page if that is something they're gonna continue, but I think they are, so. And I couldn't tell you on Widefield, so thanks for the extra information on the other.
Okay, well, it's Carlos Gonzalez who is sitting on the, he was on the Recreation Facility Task Force, and he's on the D3 School Board.
Right.
And so, it's like I said, it's a good resource, and he just wants to make sure everybody's having access to food during the summer.
Okay, great. Okay, Mayor Protem?
Well, in the continuing Southmore Drive and Creekbank saga, a whole cast of characters. We attended the Watershed District Technical Advisory Committee meeting on the 6th. Special shout out to John Trill for putting together a great slideshow presentation with some history, some background on the current situation. Special shout out to Brandy for presenting the information in a way that got through to all those engineers, the urgency of the situation. When everything was said and done, they recommended, we were originally seeking a motion to go forward to the Monetary Mitigation Fund for considering a project, and they actually did us a solid by recommending instead that the district's new executive director, Bill Banks, engage with the district's engineer or matrix design group to not put together designs, because the design effort is gonna be several hundred thousand dollars and you know, quite a lengthy process comparatively anyway, but to bring forward three concepts that the Monetary Mitigation Fund and the district board could consider towards the end of this month. A couple days later, the same group of us were at the Citizens Advisory Group to present basically the same information, but from a much different perspective. Again, a special shout out to John Trill. He presented a interesting perspective, called himself the newbie to the whole group, to the whole situation, and pointed out from a citizen's standpoint how all these officials are basically gonna be looked at later if they knew absolutely nothing. And something pretty extreme happens at that creek bank, they're all gonna be looked at like they had a chance and did nothing. So that actually kept a discussion going that was about to sort of fall off the table, and then ended up providing a kind of a launchpad for a much broader discussion. And one of the best things, in my opinion, for that Citizens Advisory Group, the CAG, they've got some folks that, some just normal people that live down in Pueblo and Pueblo County, and when they started to realize the potentials for much increased sediment loading ruining a bunch of projects that have already been done, when they started realizing the potentials for some other issues with that creek as well as safety, they sort of made it known to Commissioner Hart, who's this year's Chair of the District Board, that they would not let this issue go away until something, somewhere was done at some point, sometime. They also broadened the scope of the discussion to include some environmental issues that we hadn't even brought up yet, although they had been on the table for us to bring up if nobody else did. But they brought them up for us, which was even better, in my opinion. They also recommended to move forward. They essentially mirrored the tax recommendation to the executive director to engage with Matrix, get some concepts put together, and be ready to present to the Monetary Mitigation Fund on May 20th. I spoke with Bill Banks, who's the executive director now, the new incoming, spoke with him about an hour ago, and he said he's been really aggressively moving with Matrix to get some some concepts, sketched out, and some thumbnail estimates on cost. So what we are doing now, the team that's been working through these meetings, we're getting ready for our presentation to the Monetary Mitigation Fund Advisory Committee on May 20th. I've had a couple citizens ask me why all these committees are important, and one reason they're important is that's the way the Watershed District is set up, is to have all these subcommittees, one from a technical engineering standpoint, one from a citizens' standpoint, and that citizen group includes some pretty top-notch environmental folks and some folks involved in many of the other adjacent conservancy districts and some of the other districts like Parks and Wildlife that are potentially impacted, so they can provide their perspective. And then the way that the Watershed District is set up, the Monetary Mitigation Fund Advisory Committee kind of racks and stacks the potential projects in terms of their priority and their desirability against a whole set of pre-configured criteria. The projects related to our segment of the creek were already very highly rated. One of the things we've been told to be thinking about is how we can contribute financially, potentially, to projects that they're selected. Kind of the best thumbnail sketch that Larry Smalls, the outgoing executive director, has is for one of the projects somewhere between $4 and $6 million because of the scope, so we're all kind of brainstorming and looking for any potential grants for, I mean, even things like potential public safety impacts and how to mitigate those. Some of the environmental folks that were at the CAG meeting on the 8th have reached out and said that they'll start kind of beating the bushes, no pun intended, but beating the bushes to see if they can also brainstorm some potential funding mechanisms for us. Kind of the biggest hurdle, just to be fully candid, that I keep hearing from Larry Small, the outgoing director, and some of the other folks within the various committees, one of the biggest hurdles we're gonna face is if we can't bring any dollars to the table towards a match, or you know, even some creative ideas like zero interest long-term loans or anything like that, if we can't bring any ideas to the table on the 20th, we are likely to get turned down regardless of the urgency and potential safety impacts. So we're all kind of working hard on there between now and the 19th. I'm probably gonna reach out to each member of council individually and maybe have a quick discussion, doesn't need to be any kind of lengthy deal, but just kind of a quick discussion on any ideas you may have towards that. Would also like to, I'm gonna be reaching out to Scott and Todd and the rest of executive staff to do those same kind of brainstorming sessions. And then on May 20th, I forget the exact time that that meeting starts, it's gonna be a Zoom call. I'm gonna be requesting for Councilmember Geek to be there as well as a show of support. I hope I haven't stepped on your toes in any of this, Sam. Been kind of attacking it singularly on my part based on being a board member for the Watershed District, so if I've stepped on your toes in any of this, I do apologize for that, and but I will be asking if you have the time on the 20th, and I'll get all the information for you. If you or any of the rest of council could attend that Zoom meeting, you know, if nothing else, a show of kind of support and seriousness, and then if they should have any any questions that the rest of the team can answer, or if they opened it up for additional comments and you have some some extra perspectives, that would certainly be welcome and I think potentially helpful. And then we'll do the same thing at our district board meeting on the 22nd. We're already on the agenda for that, regardless of whether the Monetary Mitigation Fund Advisory Committee passes a yea or a nay on their recommendation. We're already on the board to, or on the agenda to discuss the entire issue again at the May District Board meeting. There's some commissioners on that board that are very interested to hear more on the seriousness and the urgency of the situation and how it continues to evolve in a dramatically negative direction, in our opinion, dramatically negative. And Larry Small has expressed he'll be very supportive in that meeting and then going forward because he is afraid. He says his biggest fear on that creek right now is that the first big rainstorm is gonna come along and either cause significant property damage or loss, or even the creek, he's afraid when he found out pedestrians and bicyclists are going along the closed section of Southmore to get to Walmart, he was afraid that the creek was gonna give away and we'd end up losing a pedestrian on the creek bank. So Larry's taking kind of a special interest in this one and is gonna try and help us shepherd through the process one way or another, so. Depending on any questions from anybody on council, that's all I've got.
Okay. Can I see, Mr. Geek?
Yes, I want to just make sure that Greg understands that anything I could do to help, I'm 100% behind whatever he's doing, and you're not stepping on my toes, as far as I'm concerned. The people need all the help they can get over there. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. I appreciate that.
Okay, great. All right, and then Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Want to remind everybody that PPLD starts curbside service tomorrow. Be patient with them as they get that up and going, but I think it's a great opportunity for especially our kids that are out of school just, and parents to start getting books to help them with what they're studying. I believe, I'm not sure if Chief Heber is on the call, but I believe this week is Police Week and our next week is, and they had to cancel all their programs and balls and the memorial service, and so thanks to all our fallen officers and their support, their families. I would like to talk at some point, maybe at the close of the meeting, or something about the unfunded PFOS bill that's coming back, and everything is gonna move pretty quickly in the legislature, and spend some time with Curtis and other elected officials in the last 24 hours on this, and what we need to look at and what the enterprise zone is that they're trying to create to come up with a long-term state funding for this, and how we need to be involved in it.
Do you want to discuss that now?
Sure. So the bill is not numbered yet. It just came out a couple of days ago, and what they're doing is creating a enterprise zone, but to fund that enterprise zone, they are thinking of, we would like to see it funded through the manufacturers and the people who created the problem. To do this, they are proposing putting a fee, can't call it a tax, because then you have to pass it on the ballot, right? So putting a fee on liquid products, and that would petroleum products, which would be propane, butane, and other petroleum products, as well as on fuel that is used at the airports. The people of rural Colorado that use propane to live by did not create this problem. They shouldn't have to pay for it every time they have to heat their house all winter long. We shouldn't have to pay for it every time we want to barbecue with our propane grill. So I would like to propose, there's gonna be two positions there that I may take. One, as a city council member for Fountain, at the advice of Curtis, is that we monitor this bill and offer amendments, of which Curtis and I have looked at writing up two of them today. The position I may take as a PPACG board member for the greater region is we might completely oppose the bill and offer those, at least one of those amendments that Fountain might offer, and maybe both.
Okay. And you said Curtis is working with you on that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, I think whether it's, if we need to do letters or whatever, we're ready to do that, and if we need to do them separately, or one as a, as a group, I don't, however we need to do that to I guess.
It's a little tough right now with the bill being unnumbered, because it hasn't been introduced, but I believe this is the point where we offer our our changes to the bill and have the best chance of getting them in. And so you can't really, you have to kind of watch how you do it right now, but I think that would be a really good way to do it, and we'll find out the correct way to do that.
Okay.
So if everybody would be okay with the monitor position right now, because the bill is being, CDPHC is one of the big writers on this bill. We do need to keep to have a great relationship with CDPHC, but I believe Curtis has some really valid points on what we need to do with it, but the long-term funding source needs to come not out of our back pockets.
Right. Okay. Unless I hear any disagreements on the monitoring, we'll kind of just go with that plan for the time being, and I'm not seeing anybody light up, so we'll be good on that. Anything else?
And the differing positions between my representation as a council member and us as the city as a whole, and a PPACG member is looking at city-wise versus regionally-wise, that we would potentially need to support some of our other partners in the area on this bill. So we'll have to see where that goes tomorrow morning.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, that is it.
Okay. Great. I have nothing else. I don't have anything, I think, for tonight that I can think of. As all you all know, I think schools are gonna be finishing up next week. I think students, learning is gonna be, we're, I think we're ending that a little bit earlier. We're planning on ending next Wednesday, but because we have so much technology and things that need to be turned back in and coordinating everything with that, the district has decided to go ahead and and end student learning for this Friday, and then next week, there's just a lot of closing the year out activities that need to occur. And I also read, and maybe John can speak on this as well, that the districts, I think, combined throughout the region, applied for a waiver or variance to the county to old graduations in some form or fashion. I think what they're doing is, is a student-only graduation, so they'll livestream it and everything, but that's kind of, I think, what, the last thing I read about that, so hopefully the kids will get at least that, and and Scott, I hope you, later on when we talk, or get your time, you can speak to the the Light Up the Night, I think we're doing in conjunction with Carter Springs and, and all the other areas as well, so. And just recognizing our graduates and our seniors as if we're getting ready to move on in life. But I think that's all I have on that end, so we will go ahead and move forward to public to be heard. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda, and we asked if you signed up with the city clerk prior to the meeting. Council may not be able to provide any immediate answer, but we'll drag staff to follow. And we do have a three-minute time limit, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Huffman if we have any public to be heard.
Mayor and council, we did receive one email from Angela Lansness with her concerns again regarding Southmore and access to Highway 8587. I forwarded that email to our deputy city manager for him to address, but that's the only comment that we've received tonight.
Okay, and then I meant to go to Mr. Trill, but he is, he must have been kicked out again. He's been having some issues, I think. But he was gonna mention that District 8 for sure is still gonna continue with the summer program for food, for lunches, and then the other thing I wanted to mention, and if Troy is on today or tonight, I know I have received at least five, and I've talked to a couple others, both council and staff, who received these, they're obviously form emails, basically trying to lay out their rights and how we can enforce things and things like that. It's obviously a form letter, because it's all the same word for word, a lot of stuff you see on Facebook, and so if Troy, could you quickly just address those emails?
Yeah, thanks there, and yeah, I think I've read the same ones that a few council members have gotten, and you know, there's a lot of different issues that they, people have pointed to in those form letters. But the reality is, is we're kind of the overarching thing that that we're kind of wanting to communicate is that, you know, nobody's constitutional rights are being stepped on during this process, and we're being consistent with the county and the state and the federal government, and doing our best to comply with kind of the best way forward that that our region specifically is moving forward with and being consistent with our partners there. And ultimately, you know, at the end of the day, we're trying to keep people safe, and and so that's kind of the general response to those letters are, you know, to the extent that the city fountain has control over some of the issues that they're suggesting, we're just trying to keep people safe, and that's kind of the overall, overall message, and if anybody wants to further discuss that, in members of the public, my information is on the website. If you want to discuss those legal concepts and ideas and what the city is doing, I'm happy to discuss those things by email, phone, or whatever, so with that, I'll leave it, and if there's any questions from council or the public, I'm happy to answer those.
Okay, I will look at council here in a second. The only thing is, on those, I just want to express to public that, just be careful with those sort of things and don't think they're gonna protect you, especially if it's just a form letter someone's sending out. If you, if you're really intent on doing those sort of things, or doing that, I would suggest you, you know, maybe talk to someone who has some legal expertise and figuring that out, because to fill out a form letter and send it out is really not gonna protect anybody from anything, unless it's, you know, done by a judge or a lawyer who actually is able to do those sort of things, so. And if you read through that letter, you'll see a lot of that's just a lot of the rumors and things that are being spread on Facebook and and all those things that really don't hold a lot of water, so. Ms. Thompson, your mic's on?
Yes, I received several of the letters also. I would just like to point out, and Troy is having a little trouble hearing Troy, I'm sorry. HR 6666 is a federal bill, and so if you want to contact someone about a federal bill, your best place to do it is to contact Representative Lamborn or any of your senators. It was introduced by Representative Bobby Rush, a Democrat from Illinois, and so maybe you might want to look at the list of the bill and contact all those people that signed on to that, but that's a federal issue, so any of us, including us, council members, and anybody in America can contact their federal representatives and give their opinion on it, but we have the same authority over that as, I mean, as anybody does, because we elect those people. And the county commissioners were pretty well slammed with a lot of these letters, and they're trying to take time and answer them, and their plea kind of was sending out hundreds of those form letters was diverting them from what they, what they needed to do while they responded to constituents, so they were they were just asking people to do a little bit more research and contact their federal representatives.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna look back at, I don't see any hands up, so I'm gonna go ahead and move on to item number seven. We have a consent agenda. All items listed under consent. Our considerably routine will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items unless the council member or citizens or requests. We have items A, B, and C tonight. How would council like to handle some agenda tonight? Ms. Thompson?
Move to approve?
And Mayor Protem?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of our consent agenda. Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Sorry, I don't understand.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Aye, yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, great. Item 8, old business. We have no old business tonight. We'll move on to item 9, new business. Nothing was taken off our consent agenda, so we'll just move into item 9B. Resolution 20-034, a resolution authorizing a power supply agreement between the City of Fountain, Colorado, acting by and through its electric, water, and wastewater enterprise utility enterprise and energy LLC relating to the purchase and delivery of wholesale electric power and energy. Mr. Mitchell?
Well, good evening, mayor and council. Very excited to bring this item to you. It's taken about 12 months of effort in negotiations to get to this point, and it certainly has been worth it. This opportunity And it certainly has been worth it. This opportunity, uh, allows us, starting this year. To look at a reduction in wholesale power costs between now. Uh, clear out to twenty thirty-nine and, uh, I'll go through a little bit more of the specifics here in a moment. Uh, this is similar to what, uh, we did back in twenty fifteen when. Uh, our wholesale power supply contract was, was expiring. And we entered into a new contract with Twin Eagle Resource Management. And then overnight, our customers experienced a twenty-one percent decrease in their. Electric rates. Uh, we're in a unique position because we don't own generation at a time when wholesale power. Suppliers are investing in very low cost renewable energy projects. And are looking for customers, uh, for their new, their new projects and are looking for load. So we're in a very good position. It's, it's just a great time for us and, uh, we're really leveraging that. So, uh. We, we can really, through this, take advantage of lower costs. Uh, and, uh. Our current wholesale power supply contract is through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. But again, we can, through this power supply agreement, recognize cost savings starting in July. So we were approached a little over a year, a year ago by Guzman Energy with a concept. Uh, that would allow us to enter into a long-term contract with them for wholesale power. That again would allow for reduction in power costs starting now. I had a chance to present this concept to city council in an executive session last year. The concept has remained the same, so. Except for, uh, two of our council members, our new council members, the rest of you have seen this. Um, I wish I could be with you in person so I could pull out the whiteboard again and. And play college professor and walk you through what it looks like. But essentially it looks like what I, what I had, had gone over with you in exec session a year ago. We did, as, as we looked at this concept, want to see if there were other wholesale power providers that. Could offer, uh, offer something similar. We did reach out to four other wholesale power providers, met with them. Couple of them I met with multiple times, uh, trying to see if we could. Get some type of a proposal, uh, that would offer similar savings over the term of a long-range contract. And, uh. With one of them, those negotiations continued even, even through last week and they were not able to extend an offer to us. So this is the only company that was able to offer Fountain. Uh, this type of a favorable contract over a long period of time. This power supply agreement has two time periods. The, the first period, the initial time period, uh, Guzman will provide monthly payments to Fountain in a, in a fixed amount. Of. The Public Service Company of Colorado, who the, the Twin Eagle contract was assigned to last July, will continue to be our wholesale power provider. So this is a separate agreement with Guzman Energy where they will provide payments to us. In return for a long-term commitment from the City of Fountain for power supply. One of the provisions in this particular agreement is that if a regional transmission organization is not formed in Colorado. Over the next three-year time period, Guzman wants the ability to terminate the agreement with us. Now, if they do terminate the agreement. Uh. They will still make three years' worth of payments to us that we will pass on as savings to our customers. In the amount of one point eight million dollars. So Guzman is willing to take the risk and, uh, those of us in this industry. Certainly see that there is a requirement and a strong need for a regional transmission organization. Uh, to take care of the Mountain West region. So Guzman just wants that ability. They wanted an off-ramp early in the contract. And the, the risk is on them. Our customers would still benefit by significant cost savings on their electric bills over the next three years. Even if Guzman, Guzman would elect to terminate. As we go through the remaining of the initial time period through the end of twenty twenty-seven. The total amount of payments. In monthly installments to the City of Fountain. Will be just over twelve million dollars. Those cost savings are passed directly on to our customers through the electric cost adjustments. And if we elect to go forward with this, uh, power supply agreement, our customers would recognize. An initial savings of a four percent reduction in their utility bills starting in July of this year. Uh, it would continue as a three percent reduction in utility bills next year. Through twenty twenty-two. And it would, um, more than double as far as savings in twenty twenty-three and continue. To increase in percentage amount of savings to the end of twenty twenty-seven. So Guzman is willing to take a risk with us. You're willing to take a twelve point two million dollar risk. In payments, uh, that, that really are coming, uh, from. From them that they will recoup in the latter years or in the second phase of the contract. So shifting to the second phase of the contract, when our current contract expires with Piesco. Uh. December thirty-first in twenty twenty-seven, Guzman will take over as the wholesale energy supplier to the City of Fountain. They will provide all of the energy requirements, uh, that are above. The WAPA hydro allocation and the Pueblo Hydro plant, uh, amount. Those two together are six to nine percent. Guzman would take care of the ninety-one plus percent of our wholesale power supply needs. Through, uh, December thirty-first of twenty thirty-nine. So when you look at. Where we start, uh, as they take over as our wholesale power provider. Uh, the, the details are included in the resolution. They will start in twenty twenty-eight, uh. At close to fifty-four dollars a megawatt hour. That amount, uh. Is adjusted, uh, down as we go. Uh, through the years going forward till twenty thirty-six, when it reaches forty-two dollars a megawatt hour and stays at forty-two dollars a megawatt hour. In twenty thirty-six. Uh, at forty-two dollars a megawatt hour. That's a twenty-nine percent reduction in wholesale power costs over what we're paying today. That translates into seventeen percent reduction, uh, in our customers' electric bills. So certainly as we get towards the end of the contract, a significant reduction in what our customers are paying for electricity. The contract is structured so that Guzman may reasonably recover. Uh, their initial investment in us of over twelve million dollars. Uh, that's why, you know, you see it ratchet down over, over the years. Uh, again, when I did this in executive session, I, I showed you that the area kind of under that curve is, is where they can recover. Uh, their initial costs. And then we get down to where they, they completed that cost recovery in twenty thirty-six. That's when we get to forty-two dollars megawatt hour for the remaining four years. As we've negotiated this contract, um. Since I, I last presented it to you, uh, it's been interesting because it continued to get better and better. Uh, Guzman is taking on almost all the risk. They are allowing us. Certain amounts of. Ability to invest in renewable energy projects. If our load grows beyond a certain amount, we would be able to even contract for the additional load with another third-party power provider. Or continue with them, uh, and get the additional. Uh, load on at forty-two dollars a megawatt hour, which is the future cost. So when you look at, if, if we have low growth and that cost actually drops for our customers across the board and for all customers. Uh, so a lot of great provisions in this, including being able to get the cost down to the bottom ends. Uh, four years early instead of clear out at the end of the contract. I do want to point out that there was one area of risk that we could not mitigate because neither. Fountain or Guzman Energy has control over it and that would have to do with any, uh, future carbon legislation. Uh. That would come from the state legislature. We don't know what we can expect. I, I do want you city council to know that I've stayed actively engaged, uh, in legislation. I continue to work, uh, at the state Capitol, work with the governor's energy office. On trying to put Fountain into a very favorable position. But in the, uh, power supply agreement, we've agreed to share that future risk with Guzman. Uh, the risk is that we may have to invest in, in future renewable energy projects to try to reach a carbon reduction goal. So we've agreed that we would partner with Guzman Energy should that happen in the future. Uh, and again, we're seeing the cost of renewable energy projects. Come in at less than a forty-two dollars a megawatt hour, so it's a very low risk, but I did want to point that out to you. So in, in summary, uh. This is a power supply agreement similar to what we did in twenty fifteen that resulted in significant. Cost savings to all of our customers and. Uh, it, it really locks us in to, to fix dollar amounts and it puts us in a very secure energy future. Uh, given some of the, some of the risk and some of the changes that we're seeing this places. Fountain into a very enviable position of being able to, to point to the costs that we will, we will incur going into the future with certainty. Another thing that we talked to Guzman Energy about is what, what might happen in the future? What if there's another reset? With regard to the cost of wholesale power. And Guzman Energy has indicated to us that. Uh, they would very aggressively work with us to do something similar to what you're seeing tonight. And reset those energy costs. Uh, because they want to continue to have a long-term relationship with the City of Fountain as the City of Fountain's power provider. So in, in summary, uh. This again is a, a very unique opportunity that would allow us. To go into the future with an annual reduction in wholesale power costs. And with an ongoing reduction in those costs that our customers pay for energy. Uh, between now and twenty thirty-nine. Uh, and with that, I certainly would entertain any questions.
Okay, thanks Curtis. Let me s- check on, uh, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, Curtis, you said, uh, that you, you folks that are in the industry are. Seeing the need for a regional transmission organization and. Um, on the one hand, I could draw the conclusion that. That's basically assured that that's going to happen, but what's your, what's your gut feeling for whether that will or will not be the case? Within that first three years, are, are you? Really confident that we'll have an RTO within that three years or is that kind of a fifty-fifty iffy proposition or where do we sit on that one?
Uh, thank you for that question and, and I would say that, uh, with high confidence, we, we see an urgent need. For regional transmission organization. The way that energy is handled in Colorado right now is very inefficient. Uh, it has the power providers pushing more energy into the transmission system than what's taken out. Because it is not managed, uh. Uh, by one group, so all of the, the generation nodes push power in. Uh, to, to a transmission system that is not, that is not well managed. Uh, we saw that we came close to it, uh, a couple of years ago and, and city council, I did brief you on that. Uh, a while ago. Uh, but there's an urgent need to do something with transmission, uh, in the state of Colorado. I also want to point out that, um. This is something that Guzman asked for, uh, so it gives them the option. It doesn't mean that it's automatic. I think it would depend on, on where they're at with their, how they've been able to negotiate transmission agreements. To take care of Fountain in the future, but they wanted the ability. If they could not reach a proposition with regard to what transmission was going to cost them. Uh, they wanted everybody to, to have an off-ramp. Contract and, and we certainly understand where they were coming from. Also, again, made the commitment to us that, that, uh, the money that would. Sorry about that. Uh, we have a custom system named Moxie. There we go. I took care of that with a treat. Uh, sorry about that. The joys of, of teleworking. Um. But it is nice that, uh, they're willing to take a risk on that. Uh, that would still be a huge benefit to Fountain. Even if they, uh, needed to terminate our agreement, it would also give us multiple years before the expiration of the Piesco agreement.
Okay, and, and then if I understood you correctly, that. That three-year period, if there is no RTO, they're not guaranteed to back out. They just have the option to.
That, that is correct. They wanted that option.
No, thanks Curtis. That's all I've got.
Okay, anybody else? Anybody in the public have questions for Curtis on this? Uh, Mr. Couch, they're going to unmute you here in a second.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my question is, I understand that, that they're putting in money for the first three years, but our contract doesn't end, uh. Until twenty twenty-six. Is that what I understood Curtis was saying?
Our current contract, Mr. Couch ends at the end of twenty twenty-seven with Piesco. So that would come in from Guzman between now and December thirty-first of twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, so in between now, that, the first three years we're going to, we're going to pay into. To reduce our rates, then we'll be buying both them and. And Eagle, is that correct?
No, then the contract with Piesco ends. Uh, and the wholesale power provider becomes Guzman Energy, so then they, they take care of providing our power needs.
Yeah, what I'm not. That we had three years and they would be paying into our system. To reduce our rates. Take us to twenty twenty-seven.
Oh, and, and thank you. I'm sorry about the confusion there. We were talking about the initial three years where they're paying in. Uh, they have the option to, uh, terminate the agreement. Depending on what happens with an RTO, but they actually pay in annually through the end of twenty twenty-seven. But there, there was that provision in three years, but, uh, the contract actually has them paying monthly payments to us. Uh, through December of twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, so we, we are able to leave that contract in three years?
They, they wanted the ability to terminate the agreement in three years, again, and it, it has to do with transmission costs, but, uh. But we would keep that money if they did terminate the agreement. Uh, however, if they do not terminate the agreement, we would continue on with receiving monthly payments from, from Guzman through the end of twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, all right. That was, that was one important.
Okay, and I apologize. It's, it can get a little confusing, so thank you for the question.
Mute. I was talking, I forgot I put myself on mute. Uh, any other questions from anybody? Okay. Okay, I see no other questions. Um, council, if you have no further questions, how would you like to move forward on this resolution? Uh, I just see who's, uh, mic went on first. I'll go with Mr. Applegate.
Yeah. I'm over that we approved Resolution twenty dash zero thirty-four.
Okay, and, uh, Mayor Protem?
My second though.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Uh, Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, and Curtis, uh, thanks a lot for all your work on this. I know, uh, at least a year, if not longer, you've been working on getting this and. And obviously good news for us is, uh, ratepayers and, and, uh, paying into this, um, getting our electricity, so. Um, uh, thanks for all the hard work again.
Okay. Council, thank you. Thank you all for your consideration. Really appreciate it and. And just to, to point out that, you know, the initial savings, uh, is twelve million dollars, but. Beyond that, uh, the, the savings is another ten to twenty million dollars, so again, I think a huge win for our community. Thank you all.
Okay, great, thanks. All right, um, on to. All right, correspondence, comments, and ex officio reports. I'll start with, uh, Mr. Trainer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Appreciate the opportunity to chat with you. I just got two quick items. Number one is, um. Our finance department continues to work through our budget cuts. We're right now just a little. work through our budget cuts. We're right now just a little bit over a million. We still have a couple of departments to meet with. And I will, when that's complete, when that process is complete, I'll bring that to the council for your review as well. I'll make sure I get that off too. That's number one. Number two, I think just based on that last presentation, we can see what a difficult time, what a challenging time it was when we first heard that Curtis was retiring. I mean, we're going to miss him and, you know, those sorts of deals that he just worked on are one of the huge reasons, besides the fact that he's just a quality person in general. But I also want to introduce our officially, and I know the council's met him, but our new utility director, Dan Blankenship. And so Dan, if you could turn on your video and audio real quick, I'm going to introduce Dan. Just I just want to introduce him briefly to say that Dan comes to us with just a lot of experience behind him. He's worked in California, he's worked in Colorado and a number of communities. He's worked in Oklahoma, he's worked in Texas, he's been in the private sector and the public sector, and we're just really excited to have him. When we went through the interview process, you know, we had a lot of great possibilities, but the cream just rose to the top and Dan's with us now and it's great to have you. So Dan, I just wanted to introduce you to the council and open it up for you if you wanted to say anything real quick.
Thank you very much, Scott. I appreciate the opportunity to address the council this evening. But most of all, I just, I really want to say that I feel really privileged and blessed to be a part of the the team here in Fountain and to be able to serve the community. It's, I'm in the middle of my third week and even with all of the awkwardness of the COVID situation, it's been a fantastic experience so far for me. I do want to say that Curtis has certainly set the bar high. I've worked with a lot of different utility directors in the past. But I just want to assure you that Chris Mitchell is a top tier in the utility field and following in his footsteps will be a tall order, but I'm certainly committed to doing that. One of the things that is very obvious to me is that he has built a very strong team, excellent team, and I'm so excited about working with that team to continue to raise the bar and to do great things with utilities for the community of Fountain.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
The only last thing I had was just, I want to mention, John Trilts will give us a quick update on Light Up the Night when we get to him.
Okay, sounds great. All right, thanks. And you're exactly right about Curtis and I'm heartwoken every day about it, but I'm going through the process to get Dan on board and I'm really excited about our future and we're going to continue moving forward. And Dan, just welcome aboard. I know we had an opportunity to chat on the phone for a little bit the other day and and just really looking forward to what you're going to bring to the table as well. So just very excited about our future and thanks to that. And I'll move on to, I'm going to kind of go down the list I have here. Staff members and we'll see who I need to go with next. Curtis, do you have anything further you'd like to speak on tonight?
Nothing further. I'll continue to work with Sharon and State Health Department on the legislation that she mentioned.
Okay, great. All right. Mr. Trilts, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. Just two things for this evening. Mayor, as you did mention, D8 schools will be serving lunches through the summer. And so they will continue to do that. You mentioned the Be the Light campaign or Be the Light event. This is going to happen on May 20th, starting at 8:20 PM for one hour. This is actually a regional event designed to recognize all of our graduating seniors who are not going to have the opportunity to participate in a traditional ceremony. So the City of Colorado Springs, City of Fountain, multiple organizations, starting at 8:20 are going to turn on lights throughout the city. They're also asking citizens to do this, businesses to do this, and really just to kind of show the community's support for those graduating classes. So we got a big package late this afternoon, different promotional information and specifics, and tomorrow I'll begin sharing that with everybody. That's all I have here.
All right, and the significance of 8:20 military time is 2020, so for the kids, 2020. That's why we'll be starting at 8:20. So thanks for kind of leading the charge on that for us, John.
Sure, and yeah, you're right. And D8 actually, I think, led the charge across the region on that with the whole 2020 thing in the military community. So kudos to them.
Great, awesome. All right. Paul and/or Lisa, I'll let one of you talk anything from IT tonight.
We've got nothing to report tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. And again, thanks a lot for making this a smooth, another smooth meeting. That's our third one and you guys have been doing a great job and just not only just for our virtual meetings, but for the public to know that since we've had to telecommute and do all this stuff, you know, they've really pulled together and really put some things together that have made it possible for our city businesses to run normally as possible. So thanks to the entire group that's been there, you know, that's been working on this and heating the call. So you guys have done a great job and I'm just very appreciative as well as the staff and and of course, the citizens, just that we're able to do what we need to do and continue moving forward, even if it's from home. So thanks a lot.
And thank you.
Yes. Ms. Huffman, anything tonight?
Just real quickly, as you all know, we are fortunate enough to be able to open up our parks on May 4th. We are still encouraging social distancing and we are still sanitizing the playground equipment daily. So that's just kind of a really great thing, moving in the right direction back to normality. So please get out there, enjoy the parks, but stay six feet away. And that's all I have.
Okay, great. I don't see any other staff on. If I'm missing anybody, please let me know. Okay, I will quickly go through council and if you have anything further, we'll see. Let me go get my list back here so I can make sure I get everybody. Ms. Duncan, anything further tonight?
I just would like to welcome Dan and note to Curtis that you're going to be greatly missed. We appreciate all the hard work you've done for Fountain. We can't thank you enough. Best wishes to the class of 2020, and I'm still looking forward to working with our youth council and we're going to get through this pandemic together.
Great. Mr. Geek, anything?
Yes, I would like to thank Curtis for all the hard work he did on this. And then I'd like to welcome Mr. Blankenship. That would be it for me tonight.
Okay, great. Mr. Applegate, anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I did get those form letters too, and I want to thank Sharon for clarifying that that has nothing to do with us. They got to go above us because we can't do anything about it. And I hope they understand that. That's all.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Applegate. Ms. Estes?
Just welcome on board to our new utilities director, Mr. Blankenship, and many, many thanks to Curtis for getting us into the position that we are. We're going to miss you. And I'm fortunate, didn't receive any of the COVID-19 emails, so don't miss out on that. So that's it. Thanks.
That's okay. All right, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I just want to go ahead and echo everybody else's sentiments. Welcome aboard, Dan and Curtis, on both a professional and personal basis. I am profoundly grateful for how you have helped me in the last six years and I really do appreciate it. Definitely going to be missed. And Dan, looking forward to building a good productive relationship with you as well and looking forward to you taking the city from where we are to the next step. Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Thompson?
Have a great evening. Welcome, everybody. Look forward to being together again.
Okay, with that, I don't have anything other than just on the COVID stuff. I know we're getting a few questions from some restaurants and things like that when that's going to open, and we're really just taking our lead from our county health department and of course, the governor. And if we can expedite any of those things, we certainly will try our best in doing that. And but from what I'm gathering, I think the governor's looking to open up restaurants soon. Hopefully by the end of the month, we can at least probably start getting some people in. I've also gotten some calls from some of the churches about being able to reopen as well. I know my church is actually starting masses this weekend and I don't know how they're doing it, but they're you have to register to go in and they're only allowing 50 people in at a time. And so they must have gotten some kind of waiver through the county as well. So if anybody is on or listening or will listen to this from any of the faith-based organizations, maybe check with the county health department as well to see what that process is. And getting those open and moving forward, because I know we're all desperately wanting to get back to some of those things as well. Again, thanks for the parks being open. I've heard some good things about that and seen people out using those as well. So I think that's all I have for tonight. Our next meeting, oh, the one other thing is having a actual real council meeting, so we're in chambers. I think really the thing that's kind of limiting us at this point is that 10-person rule. And so as soon as that hopefully gets let up a little bit and and I know Scott and staff have been really kind of keeping an eye on when we can get back into those meetings and be in city hall. That would be my preference as well as to have normal meetings again and do it that way. So as soon as we can, we will. I just want to let public know that as soon as we can get going on those, we we will certainly start meeting back at city hall, even if it's, if we can do it in a maybe a pared-down version as well. So hopefully sooner rather than later, we'll see how things go. Next meeting is May 26th. Everyone, take care and we will close the meeting out. We'll see you then. Take care.